Do you want to just make a motion to go into?
We will, yeah. Hearing none, no presentations, unfinished business, none, and new business. So the new business, can everybody hear us out there? I see most people are there. So, all right, I see thumbs up. All right, so we've kind of determined that I think we'll vote to go into a study session here. That way, we don't have to take minutes for this whole time. So, and then we can talk about how we're going to open up here and get on with the business. So I'll take a motion to enter into a study session.
I'll make a motion to go into a study session. Gary Bonok.
Support.
Second by Bergy.
Moved and supported, any discussion? Not, roll call, please.
What at?
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Got here?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Bergy?
Yes.
All right, so the reason we've come here, among other things, is to talk about bringing the building back online to the public in some way, shape, or form, or how we're going to do that by office, by building, by whatever. So we've invited all the department heads and elected officials to have a discussion what works best for their office. Certain ones have needs, others don't. We'll start with personnel. You guys got anything? I mean, we did something last week, so.
We each, if y'all have read the direct, I acknowledge it went up very, very late Friday, and I forgot, I apologize, but in theory, if you check your emails when you came in this morning, you've had an opportunity to at least glance over. We asked each office to give us a feel for where they felt they were headed. That is in this, the, if you bothered, not only bothered, if you had time to look at it, that was in that. I think if you also looked, I believe, I also indicated that if you looked at the My Safe Start Plan to Reengage Michigan's Economy that went out May 7th, there is a chart in there, and we are at level three now. Dan and I talked about this, and Gary too, a little bit this morning. I think there's going, this is just me talking, and I have nothing to base this on, just. I think she's going to extend level three for another two weeks in the, in middle of June. She may give up on a few things that she presently is holding back on opening, but I don't know. I, I'm not strong on that feeling. I do think that by 4th of July, we will be into level four. And level four, if you haven't looked at it, is additional low-risk businesses with strict safety measures. She indicates other retail capacity limits, offices, but tell work required as possible. I think we'll find ourselves in level five, which begins to really open stuff up. There are six levels. Six is everything's open, we're back to no real restrictions other than some common sense, probably. I think that we might see that by Labor Day. I think we're going to see the level five at maybe 4th of July. I, I don't know. Optimistically, maybe before then, but, but just, you know, the way it's going and her, her segments that she has laid out, I, in my, I, I just, I don't know. But having said all of that, I think that we need to look at what we can do here. Pretty much, all of the departments are working on an availability to an appointment if they need, if someone needs to come in. With the help of Dave and others, we have really a pretty good system where if you need to drop something off, you can drop it off in the boxes that are available up in the main lobby area, or not really the lobby, but the main entrance area. That seems to be working for people. It seems to be working for the department. It's not an end-all, it's not the solution to everything, but for right now, it seems to be working. I don't think it's too much involves Troy, but Missy, I think you've indicated, and I think, I don't know, who else? Is Cheryl on there?
Yeah, she is.
Yeah, okay, yeah. I, I've heard.
Could you unmute everybody, John? We all, we should be fine here.
Oh, yeah. I think that we've indicated, or I've heard from both of you, and I think in the clerk's office also, that that's kind of working. Once in a while, there's been something that's needed a signature, perhaps a notary or something. They have gone to the entrance, done it with the individual, kept the individual from having to come in, and it got taken care of. I think by maybe letting folks know that they have the option of an appointment, in theory, you wouldn't have appointments on top of each other, but if you feel need to clean after that, then fine. If you, one of the things that I would like to, if you have a credit, I, I am going to read this to you, I know you all can read just fine, but in conversation with as many employees as I could talk to, there was concern about people being in other people's spaces. It relates to that six-foot concept, as well as just kind of in general, but employees that don't always know where another employee has been, so the confidence that they are COVID-19 virus-free is uncertain. One suggestion we heard was that rather than meeting in an office, that you ask for a meeting with the individual in the office, and then determine where that meeting is going to take place. You can designate, we have other places you can meet. You can meet in the hallway if necessary, you can meet down here, you can meet in the small courtroom, possibly the main court, you could sit down if it's not busy, you can meet in the jury room, although the jury room gets pretty small, too. But people were uncomfortable where their offices were small, and there wasn't a comfortable six-foot distance, and that's true in almost all of the offices. I think we need to respect that, and if the person says, where can we meet? We need to determine a place and, and do that. But what I'm hearing and sensing is that I think, my, my recommendation, I think our, I think I can say our recommendation, would be we continue with the by appointment only until the end of May. See what she does, and let that be a determining factor, and regroup again early, early, maybe after our first meeting in June, although that's kind of, our meeting is what, June 3rd?
Yeah.
Okay, that's not too far into June. So although that is a week, actually, but it's about nine days after she's going to do whatever she's going to do, the governor's going to do whatever she's going to do. But I think we stick on the by appointment now, and until the end of, of May. I welcome anybody who's got a different opinion on this. I'm sorry. But this is why we want to have everybody come together this morning. What are your other thoughts? Do you like that idea? Do you think you need to alter it? And if so, alter it to what?
Which leads us into my next, where I want us to go next, is why we have each office, just give an update on what you're doing. Are you hearing anything from the public that would say, hey, I need to be able to have access? And do we need to adjust what we're doing in your office now? Do you need more access? Though we do, I mean, we are respecting the governor's order, we are essential, so we could operate, I mean, this was a self-imposed quarantine for our building. If we needed and found it necessary, we could open back up if we have to. But that's up to, as far as we've talked here, it should be a lot, as Carolyn said, up to what you as offices want, want to be able to manage. My thought was that as she opens the economy back up, there could be more, more pressure from public that want access to offices, so we would respond appropriately as the economy opens up. I don't, we don't know if we really need to preempt what they're doing, but, so, go ahead, I don't, start with, Missy, you're up there, so I can see you first. You want to say what you're doing in the office? You think you need to change anything? What do you see as working well for what you're doing?
Okay, yes. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, perfect.
Okay. So I, I do have a few concerns, and I had spoken to Carolyn just this morning, but as far as the office goes, I know I have one searcher, one from a title company that has been on me for a week or better about coming into search records. So I have decided to, I'm going to allow my couple of title companies that would need to come into search, I'm going to start doing that on a limited basis by appointment only. As far as everything else goes, the majority of documents we record are by mail, UPS, and FedEx anyways, so the building being shut hasn't really stalled any of our recording of documents. And I guess one of my biggest concerns is now we are into May, and that brings the nice weather, and it also brings the individuals who live in the southern part of Michigan, three, four hours away, where all the hotspots are, wanting to come into the office and, you know, search records and things like that. So I'm not comfortable, and especially since the stay-at-home order is still in effect, you know, as far as general public searches go, just for fun, I, I don't feel that I'm ready to open the office for that yet. However, if people have to make an appointment, and it's something we can help them at with the window, I would not be opposed to, you know, doing that. Just basically, I'm just saying, I'm going to take baby steps and just kind of see how things go, but, I mean, the governor has a stay-at-home order issued till May 28th, so I don't really feel like I need to encourage people to be visiting either, unless it's, you know, really necessary.
Yeah, I agree. So your title companies, you'll, you'll have like a, a positive control on them, ask them to do a, do a health screening on themselves and, and just verify that whoever comes in is good, and you'd be able to do that?
Well, that's another question, because I did talk to Tom Michael about that, and, you know, there's only so much. He felt that I probably could ask if they were COVID symptoms-free, but aside from that, you know, he didn't really know that I would be able to ask any other pertinent health questions, so there too, you know, poses an issue. I don't want to bring unwanted infection into the office or, or the building in general, so. And I talked to Dave Hanson last week as well about getting a piece of Plexiglas inside the office at the station that's by the public entrance for the office, because, you know, we don't have a safeguard there yet either, so he was going to be working on that for me.
Well, it seems reasonable, you'd be able to communicate with two title companies and say, look, you gotta, you know, we gotta stay safe here, we don't need anybody who's sick. I, I appreciate the, the concern over the public, I think you're right, we could have a lot of people who want to come in and do searches. What about passports? How many people do we get out of town that come up here and do a passport?
Most people that do passports are going to be local people. And again, the only issue I have there is, you know, I, I really am, I'm not comfortable at this point letting the general public in the office, so for a passport photo, I mean, I've talked to Dave about some changes so that I'd be able to step out in the hallway and take their photo instead of having them have to come into the office. That's not in place yet either, but as far as out-of-town people and passports, most times it's people that do live, you know, in Alcona County, or maybe just a close neighboring county.
All right, any other questions for Missy? I think you, you pretty much summed up where you're at, seems to be meeting the need. We're not getting any complaints, other than the one person, but if you're going to address that, I don't see a problem.
Yeah, and I wouldn't really say complaints, I mean, she's just pressuring, she wants to be able to come in and, and do some work, so.
Well, with, with the 18th having come last week and real estate opening back up, is that going to create a little more pressure even for these title companies?
Um, it may. It may, although, I mean, you know, the couple of title companies that I work with who do have to come in here, I mean, I feel like I can have a good conversation with them, I don't feel that they're going to be disrespectful, I feel that, you know, if they're not feeling well, they're not going to jeopardize the situation. But, you know, the other thing is, they're all coming from, probably most of them, the Saginaw area, so there again, and, and we're still kind of opening up the office to, you know, possible exposures, but that's, I mean, we have to start somewhere.
Yep, I agree. So we'd still have, you'd have masks in place and PPEs and all that stuff as they come in and do things, and whatever Plexiglas we can put up, we can minimize it as much as possible, but I think you're right, we got to start somewhere.
Yeah. I'm sorry, before, before I close, I, and some of this, some of this may be covered, but, I mean, I guess in terms of opening the building to the public, I mean, I guess I'm just, I'm looking for maybe some steps as to how you're going to do that to, you know, when the building does open, which I understand can be quite some time yet, but, you know, how we're going to handle the limit of flow into the building. So that was just another question I had.
All right, well, that's what we're gonna, we're still talking about, I mean, we have a little ways to go here, so. All right, Cheryl, you on?
Yep. We have, go ahead. Can you not hear me?
We can, yep, we can hear you.
So we have had a continuous, continuum of our processes as far as tax collection. Obviously, the people coming in, we have, they've utilized the outside drop box. We did have an increase in credit card payments. So we really haven't stopped the flow, we've taken in about $350,000 in taxes in the last three months. So as far, but as far as cash, we discourage cash, we will take, we're looking at taking appointments to meet someone in a particular area to collect the cash, have them stay there, and then we will bring them a receipt. We are, we're working towards that, because we can't really deny people trying to make tax payments, and if cash is their only option, and the exposure, I would like to keep to a minimum for the building. I don't know if there's a good spot other than the entryway to have them, you know, wait there. That's where I was feeling out where everybody else was going to be with taking appointments and things. We don't have a lot of call for in-office. All the records are available on the computer downstairs in the equalization entryway if someone needed to do a public search for delinquent taxes or any type of tax search down there. And if there were specific records that weren't on the computer, we can, you know, it's very rare that we have those requests, but we can accommodate with an appointment. So that's kind of where we're geared towards.
All right, then you're not hearing any, any kickback from anybody out in the public, like we can't get done what we need to get done, things, I, I haven't heard anything, so.
It's the cash, we had a few people say, I, I can't, I don't have, I don't have a tech log, I, I'm not using my credit card, because it does cost extra, so that's why we're accommodating. The forfeiture has also, or the foreclosure has also been set back, because we're past the day, so the foreclosure will not happen until the 29th of June, which puts us in another predicament, kind of, for the 2017 taxes that we had that we're foreclosing on, but we're working with it.
So you, you don't really have people come into your office, you don't have the same issue as the deeds, do you? You, you can keep them out at the window or out?
I have as more.
Yep. All right, any questions for the treasurer, any other? All right, thank you, Cheryl. We'll go down the hall. Trina, are you speaking here for stuff?
Yeah.
Okay, so you guys, I mean, what does it look like? What's the, what's the office doing? What's it look like it should be doing, could be doing?
Well, our main public that are requesting to come in would be notarizations, things like that for DVAs, those things, we have been taking them, they give us a call, we let them know to call us when they get to the building, we go out and we take care of any business like that that they need to do. Other than that, we've been taking general phone calls, but there hasn't really been much demand for coming into the building other than those things. We've had some election filings, but we've gotten most of those in now, so there's not as many notarizations for those. So we're just basically taking appointment-only calls if they need to come in, if they have cash or any payments for the courts, then they can put them in the box and we process them.
And that's working fine, no, no issues. You, when I was in there, you had said CPLs, there was an issue, people couldn't?
There is an issue with CPLs, I think that we could, we could start making appointment-based ones with that, and they can stay at the window. We have our, our guard up, so there's, there's that that we can start doing, but that is depending on what the county's decision is on letting the general public into the building. And it is possible that we can look at their driver's license, give them their oath if necessary at the front entrance, process their information, and bring it back to them. That's another thing that we can do, so.
Could these be done on a appointment basis?
Yes.
I've got a question, the fingerprinting, does that have to, how often do you need to be fingerprinted, just the initial one, or every time you renew?
When, on your new licenses, you would need to be fingerprinted, and that would depend on what the sheriff's department is doing, once they process their information.
But re-registering, you don't need to do that?
When they renew, no, they don't.
Okay.
All right, anything else? Anybody got any questions? All right, I'll do the courts in a second, because I'm going to combine, and we'll talk to you and Tom at the same time, because that's going to make a interesting, Troy? Equalization?
Equalization. Next week, we plan on being full staff, right this week, as of right now, we're going to have a few people, but next week, we'll be full staff.
Do you know if you guys can go out yet, and?
We are going out next week.
Okay.
I mean, and taking very precaution, we'll, we'll carry some wipes, when we, if we come across somebody, wipe it out, and wear their mask and whatever if you have to measure. Next week is the bathroom, Aaron and I will be going outfield, so we'll be the only one. We got our phone thing under control, and hopefully, their babysitter that is opening up next week, so that's why I'm saying we'll be back full-time.
How about people?
Reason that she closes, I'm going to have an issue on that, because I have two staff that have kids, and they need to be with their kids if they don't have a babysitter. So that's what I'm dealing with this week, just trying to get.
Same question, though, for the public coming in, how would you respond?
By appointment.
By appointment?
I kind of agree with, Carolyn and I talked, and I kind of would still go by the appointment to the end of the month.
Yep.
And go from that, because usually people, the only one that comes in and sees this is Alyssa, gets looked at appraisal cards once in a while, but usually they'll call and just say, hey.
On your assessors, if they got to come in, so, but they can make an appointment.
They make appointments, you know, appraisers will call and just ask for copies, I mean, they'll even, she comes in, because she is here convenient for, but otherwise, usually they'll call and say, hey, can you send me this? They will send you, so we don't get a, besides my assessors coming in. So, but we're planning on having to be in full staff next week, so.
Okay.
I don't think, we've heard no complaint to that, you know, from people.
All right, Alyssa, so a big part of the building is, of course, the courts. Last word I heard, nothing, no jury trials through June 22nd. Any increased anticipation of traffic having to come in? You're doing some in now, minimal.
So we're directed by the Supreme Court orders as far as, as what is essential for courts, so even though courts are essential, not everything we do is essential, just like every office, I would imagine there's things that you do in your offices that are not essential. So the essential hearings that we have, the essential court matters, if they're not able to appear remotely, we have to allow them access to the building, and, and we've been doing that this entire time. For the majority of people, they are able to appear remotely, but there has been instances where that's not possible. What, something new that came out last week is, sorry, this is distracting, something new that came out last week from the Supreme Court is direction as far as reopening court systems, we have certain protocol that we have to follow, so it's really important, and I can share that, this document, whether each of you, you see that, and I'll share it with you too, Dave. It's important that you know this, because you might decide to take course of action, but we are restricted by what the Supreme Court is telling us that we can do. So we have a four-phase, four-gate plan, that's not our plan, this is the Supreme Court, the One Court of Justice Plan. And what it says in a nutshell is that we have to work with our local health official, we're hoping to have a meeting with the health department this Wednesday, I've been trying to get ahold of Denise since last week, and I haven't been successful in that yet, but I've been leaving messages to try to set up a meeting with her on Wednesday, along with some of the commissioners, Dan and Carolyn, and you're aware of that, because we have to consult with the local health authority to get through a gate, and we have to meet certain requirements regarding hospital occupancy, the number of infected people in the area, and then looking at the people that we're serving, which is basically just going to be our, our region here right now. And then if we meet certain criteria, we make it through that gate, and then we go to a phase, and there's four, four steps like this. So the first phase would be requiring PPEs, really similar to what we're doing now, and then talking about the appointment thing as well, would be our first phase. One of the differences that we have to comply with, that I, that I know the county has taken a different direction on already, is the requirement to wear PPE in the building. The court stance on that is that we are compelling people to be here, nobody wants to come to court, we are forcing them to come here. And if they are not able to come here electronically, but it's an essential court case that they have to be here, we are tasked them with making sure that they are safe. So we are requiring wearing of PPEs, we have to, but we're also, we feel that it's our duty then to make sure that they are, that we're minimizing any possible exposure for that individual while they are required to come into our building. So I think the judge is concerned about the county not requiring people in the building for other services to use PPE while they're in the building, just encouraging it. Meanwhile, we are making people come here if they have to for court, and, and possibly exposing them to people that are choosing not to wear that, so that is an issue that we're seeing right now. As far as the by appointment only, what we're doing right now has been working fine. We have people coming into the courthouse to swear to warrants. On occasion, that would be officers, and DNR are, have been great at complying with wearing PPE, I don't see officers coming into the building with masks or anything on, but the attorneys are coming in that need to access us for whatever reason, and then DNR officers have been wearing masks and, and other things like that. Other than that, there's been a few occasions where we've had defendants that had to appear in the court. And we've been providing PPE with, to them through the stuff that we've been getting from Scott. Or we've been having them appear at the jail remotely on Polycom, trying to minimize the amount of people in a room. That's really what we've been doing. I don't feel like anything needs to change right now with what we're doing.
All right, Tom, you still there?
He might be in court.
Where was he at? Was he up in our building or was he somewhere else?
But he's on Zoom with the court also, so.
Okay.
You mentioned he had a case this morning.
Yep.
Judge Riffle in Ohio.
Yep. Tony, you still out there, can you hear me? So I think Tony's under the same.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, the Veterans Affairs Office, you know, we've dealing with the same thing all the other offices are. We do require that the veterans that do come in wear, you know, PEE and everything. And, you know, hand sanitizer coming in, you know, because they're going to come in and touch things. We, we recommend them to, you know, stand, hand sanitize as they come in. But it has been a by appointment only. Things have slowed down because a lot of the veterans here in our community are elderly veterans and they are really high risk, so they are taking extra precautions on not trying to come in if they don't have to.
All right, so you're able to, you're getting done what you need to get done.
Yeah, we're, we're operating like by mail, emails, phone calls, been doing a lot of Zoom conferences. So we've just been plugging along.
Alrighty, thank you Tony. Yes.
Just really quick, one thing I forgot to mention too, something that is also being required of us is when we're done at the conclusion of a court hearing, we are sanitizing the courtroom. And so that we didn't, we didn't want to ask any more out of maintenance and what they're already doing. So we're doing, they, you know, made sure we have clean supplies, but my staff is, is doing that. So if other offices are going to use court facilities, we ask that you sanitize those facilities when you're done using them because that is something that we are required to do when we're done with our hearings is sanitize the courtroom and wipe everything down. So if Carolyn had mentioned other people using some of the court facilities potentially for meetings, those would need to be cleaned afterwards, not sanitized, but cleaned.
Yep. All right, Scott Stevenson. I don't think anything's, you're, you're operating over there the same as you have been, correct?
Yeah, we, we are Craig. We, we're trying to getting back to normal a little bit. We had some bookings last week, we did five of them on Thursday as Alyssa alluded to. We did the arraignment sound. That went real, seems to look pretty good for us. Our lobby still isn't open, but I'm considering opening that back up pretty soon. We have a barrier where our staff wouldn't have physical contact with people in the lot, in the lobby if they're working with us. But I'm kind of going to feel around other sheriff's offices and see if they're doing something like that. I really don't want to be the first one picking my neck out on that, but probably not too far away from doing something like that. You know, and, and we're letting them in the lobby, I don't think I'm going to let them into the jail right away. That's going to be a while out yet. And Carrie alluded to it a little bit ago about CPL applications, they have to get fingerprinted. And really I, I haven't heard any complaints specifically from anybody, but in general, people wishing to get CPLs are kind of limited in doing that right now if they're not able to get their fingerprints. So it, it hasn't been a specific complaint or concern of anybody's, but as I said, it's a general one of the community and not just here, but pretty much everywhere. Because all jails are, are shutting down. Well, my, my first step probably is going to open up the lobby, maybe as soon as the end of this week or early next week if that's kind of what other places are doing. Sometime after that, we'll start taking the public into the jail for drug testing, alcohol testing.
All right, well, and so it sounds like you're responding to however people start moving around again and activity starts happening, you're going to have to respond appropriately because.
Yeah, it, it, we are and we have been, you know, and my people have been dealing with the public here and, and in the community. So we, we haven't been able to live in the bubble that everybody else had, had to go out. And like I've said at other meetings, we were used to dealing with diseases and, and impacted people and we're doing the best we can to stay safe and so far it's good.
Good. All right, thank you Scott, Scott Rice, you got anything to add?
Nothing really to add. I think we should keep the classroom closed until the county opens up as a whole. The population of the, of the usage of that classroom is in that higher age group that are more volatile to the degree. So I would, I would go ahead and keep the classroom closed at least through the 28th of May. We've had no inquiries as to when's it going to open or can we get back in there?
All right. Any questions for either one of those two fellows? All right, did I miss anybody? Dave, Dave's here, Dave's got to be here, he's not going anywhere.
Working through our list of checklist that we talked about doing. We talked about the drop boxes are working really well upstairs. We got the new lock system installed and they got that aberrational. That seems to be working really well. Like I said, even for the clerk's office, when they're having people come out there to notarize things and stuff like that. We have tables inside the entranceway now. So somebody can come in, they can hand them the paperwork, they can sit out there, they can sign it. When they're done with it, they can put it in the drop box, then they can go out. There's cleaners out there, so when we're checking in packages and stuff like that, the lobby area has been working fairly well. Like I said, doing appointment home kind of stuff, we did install the plexiglass on most of the court offices. My big project was to take a piece of glass out of equalization and did make them a station now. So you can actually, if somebody comes down there to access the public records outside of the office there, they can use the computer, but they don't have to go into the office anymore to pay for printouts or anything like that. They actually have a window now that they can service the customers through without having to, having to let them in the office. As far as Missy's stuff goes through, she was talking about another piece of plexiglass. The building department requested the same thing. I did purchase the plexiglass last week at the lumber up in the garage. I just haven't put it all together yet. I'm going to cut it, similar to like the hardware stores have. It's just going to be a tabletop thing that's going to sit on top of the tabletop. So when they come out to exchange money, whatever, I'm not sure exactly how the building department's going to handle, but they were just looking down the road. They needed to, at least that way if they came in, they'd have something to buy. So it's in the process, I just haven't got to it yet.
Okay, so speaking of the building department, they, I mean, builders went to work, right? Personnel's that been involved with Carrie at all, are you?
I haven't talked.
Carrie, I was over there on Friday and she said they've been actually really busy, lots of permits. But same thing, we installed the drop box outside of their door, which has been working very well so they can exchange paperwork without actually having to go into the office.
They're back to regular schedule.
Right, right, yeah, they're.
Yeah.
So that's kind of a, you know, that's kind of a indicator, that office. That's one group of people that have come back to work and they're full bore and that office is seeing that kind of activity. So I think as the rest of the economy starts coming back is when we're going to have to respond appropriately to make access to people to get into these offices.
As we opened up to the public, even just by appointment only, the one issue that we have had a couple of instances is people come in or they're, they're doing something by appointment only, they come into the building and they walk out of the building, they're just letting other people into the building because they're not following the same protocol we are. So somebody was outside the door, standing there, looking at the thing, trying to figure out yanking out the doors, couldn't get in. Well, somebody else then went out there, went through our fancy lock system, opened up the door and said, here you go, come on into the building. So we've been trying to control that a little bit. So we talked about if we could do something by appointment, I mean, it sounds a little bit silly, but maybe just kind of make sure that when they go out of the building, they don't let somebody else in.
Well, I think that's, that you've got to, you need to escort them in and escort them out.
Yeah.
So they're not traveling throughout the building. It seemed to be the biggest concern is somebody will come in and do something and pay their taxes and said, oh, that's right, I need you to go talk to somebody down in front of the court or somebody in the court services and they travel to the other end of the building where they're not planning on having anybody in that end of the building. So it's more us controlling when we bring people into the building, more in and out. Along with that also became making the employees aware that if people are going to be coming out at an appointment, they still, public may be using the restrooms. So we can try and clean and sanitize those areas more, but we have a little feeling that we're in our own little bubble here in the building, using the restrooms in the vagabond deal. But once somebody else starts going in there and washing their hands and using things, we have to be aware that there's going to be other people using facilities in the building. So we may have to step our sanitizing up throughout the building and stuff. And I know it's just by appointment only, but things, you know, can happen now.
But by the same, I mean, we've increased hand washing and
Correct.
and everything else, even if they go into a common facility, you're still going to be.
Correct. And it's just one of those things, these are just things that were pointed out to me is what about this and what about this? And I'm just bringing up some of the items that I've heard going through the processes and stuff.
So if everybody heard that, I, I hope that's what we're doing. If we have appointments, they need to be escorted in and out of the building. They're only supposed to come to you for your appointment, they're supposed to leave with you after their appointment. So if everybody heard that, hopefully.
The other thing we did add is downstairs in the area right outside the prosecutor's office, we put another table, another chair, some hand sanitizer down here. So if somebody come in, want to talk to equalization or talk to the prosecutor by appointment, and they even want to just meet right here, instead of having to go all the way upstairs to the lobby area or to do papers, they could do it right down here if they're exchanging stuff. So it just made another station where somebody had to come in and sign something. They can come in, you can stop them at that point, whether they feel like you have to take them farther in your office to get signatures or anything like that.
All right, thank you Dave. Anyone else got anything to add here? Any questions, comments? I don't want to be the only one to talk.
Well, I, and it's my only comment is I think everybody's done an exceptional job through this. Everybody's been working together, everybody's, I, I just, to me, there's not an issue. Everybody's following it, I understand Alyssa and the mask issue with the court systems and all that. But I, I just think everybody's done an exceptional job and, and, you know, all we can do is sit back and see what the governor's going to do and, and get this thing back up and going again. But I applaud everybody for the job they've done.
Hearing no other comments. I would agree with Dan, I, I mean, I hope I speak for the board. We are very fortunate to have a group of people who are doing what you're doing. This is a strange and odd time. I had a doctor's appointment this morning, it took two hours to get in and out of the doctors to do all the masks and the, all the paperworks and all the different things. So we're not alone, a lot of places are doing this. But we are thankful for the effort that you're all putting in and that we're all doing this together. It seems to me, unless I'm reading it wrong, that we continue on with what we're doing on an appointment basis. Let each office structure what they need based upon the need, limiting people as much as possible, but doing it by appointment if necessary and it will respond to an uptick if stay home, stay safe ends and there's more business going on, then we would have to respond appropriately and maybe open up in another phase with maybe a more intense type of appointment or actually let people in and keep a number, only certain, allow a certain amount of people in the building, much as they've done with the stores. We can do that and kind of phase it in depending on, on probably what the infection rate looks like. I'm interested in what you're doing with DHD, with what the courts are doing. I think we'll take a look at that because DHD will probably have some recommendations for us on what they think would be the best way to open up and.
We'll have requirements.
Yep.
We have a number of requirements in our phases that we cannot exceed.
Right. So we'll probably try to use a little of their information and give us some guidance on how we open the building and what's safe and what's proper. Is that, anybody got any comments, any, anything any different than that or? I'd like to have a big revelation about something new and great, but I don't think there is.
Well, the only thing I can say is, you know, this is a public building. At some time, we are going to have to get back to letting the public in. I mean, I, you know, I hate to, to take that stance, but you know, I'm not sure that we haven't gone maybe too far with, with a lot of this and I will speak to that, to that opposition. I, I mean, you know, there, there is a point where, you know, you can only do so much and things are still going to happen.
Well, we're still public, you can still come in the building, you can't walk in and out at, at any, on a whim.
I understand, I'm just, as I said.
Yep. And, and it is, you know, it is for the public safety and it's for our people's safety. If we, we don't want our people sick and then we can't do the jobs that you've been able to do for the last three months or two months, has it been three or two, I don't even know anymore, 60 days?
March 16th.
So hearing any other comments, none? All right.
I, I think it's appropriate if we leave our study session or work session, I think it's appropriate that in our minutes, we reflect that based on review of all departments, that we will be functioning with the building close to the public, but being able to address the needs of the public through an appointment system. I just, it kind of gives us a status quo to where we are now and how we're going to move forward until further new developments.
So I think, let me see what our, what is our, what do we say on the website? I think we've mentioned appointments now, so our current status, I don't know, it's been taken down, it looks like. Information notices, yeah, so our, our, our current status was that the building is closed to the public and could be called or by appointment only, is what was, had been written and what everybody was to know since day one.
True, but it would seem to me
And we can re.
inappropriate to have an update.
No, I think we'll.
One of the key things when you write that is the fact that the county services are open for business by appointment only. But the court system is still closed to the public.
Yeah. I think that you have your own press release.
Well, I don't know how to word it in the building and stuff like that, I'm not sure how you.
Well, I think you've had your own press release that explains where you're at as a court system, yeah. So I would, we would reaffirm our status as a building close to the public. After thorough discussion with all the offices and everybody involved, the board continues to reaffirm that the building will stay closed for the foreseeable future with a by appointment only and services are still available, service by email, by telephone, by whatever mode of communication and certainly by appointment upon request. So I'm fair enough?
Yeah. Alyssa, you mentioned a meeting on Wednesday, is that?
I've, that's the date that we had polled, I've been leaving messages for Denise, right Carolyn?
Yes.
I've been leaving messages.
Have you been trying to call her, have you been, she has a cell number, have you tried that?
I've left messages at her office and with her secretary.
Okay.
I'm assuming.
Let me, after we're done here this morning, I'll give her a call.
Thank you, Karen.
You get a hold of Cory right here in Harrisville too. Well, yeah, he'll get a hold of her. But anyway, I, I mean.
Yeah, we are aiming for Wednesday because we, you know, just we need to go over this stuff.
Okay.
Okay. All right, on that note, take a motion to move out of study session, back to regular meeting?
I'll make a motion, move back into, into meeting.
Support?
I'll support.
Roll call?
Johnson?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so on that note, we would entertain a motion.
To adjourn.
Is there support to adjourn?
Can we do anything else on this meeting or are we going to wait till next one?
So do we want to make a motion that reaffirms our position on the building? Or do you want me to just write that up and put it out there and?
We should reflect the minutes like Carolyn said, because the minutes get posted.
Yep.
I would concur with Commissioner Gauthier.
So Trina, you'll address in the minutes that the board discussed, current operations of the building and agreed to continue it as, didn't fail, there was a motion needed and the status quo continues. And we'll write up a new paragraph that addresses that, that basically says the same thing.
Yeah, I don't think there's.
Okay. All right, any other comments, questions? Anybody from out there? No?
I'll make my motion to adjourn again.
And supported and passed, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, everybody.